I think I might be live. Let me double check here. Let me check a setting here to make sure I did this right. Hopefully everyone as well. Yep. On public. That's good. So, welcome everybody. Happy, happy Sunday afternoon to you. Welcome to a special session. Where I come back on in the afternoon and finish out all the readings I didn't complete this morning. If you're looking for the schedule of kind of the order in which I'm going to do the readings. That's all in the description box of the video down below. And then after I'm done with the stream, I will post a pinned comment. Listing the order in which the readings, well, it's not the order, but it I list all the readings I've completed and then all the timestamps next to it as well. We will start off with the donations that I did not finish from this morning and then we'll move into my YouTube channel members and then the other free readings is kind of the order. What else did I want to say? You'll see there's no chat. I'm not taking any new requests for this session. This is just a makeup session. For the earlier, I'll be back on Friday. I'm on Friday and Saturday nights. At 6:00 PM Mountain Time and Saturday and Sunday mornings, starting at 11:00 AM Mountain Time. And yeah, we get together during the week with my YouTube channel members. If you're interested, I have two levels. Zen Cricket at 2.99 a month, Praying Mantis at 7.99 a month. All that information's down in the description box of the video if you want to check that out. We do have, we're together two to three, sometimes four hours on Thursday night. So. Alright, I'm excited to get more into readings here. Thank you guys again for your patience and getting to your readings. If you had any of the free readings yesterday in the morning session, my six hour plus session, I didn't get to any free readings. And in my evening session, I didn't get any free readings, but I came back on after my praying mantis session for a little over two hours and finished out all the free readings. From the day. So be sure to check out that stream from late last night. And you'll have all your answers there. Again, there's a pinned comment with all the timestamps, if you're wanting to jump to your reading. I split it out by donations and then YouTube channel members, early morning and evening session, and then free readings, early morning and evening session. So you can find your name and click on those that way. Alright, I think that's it. Let's jump in. So let me grab timestamps here. So June, you are up first. So thank you, June. For your additional donation here. And your follow up. So for the nuclear reading, that was hilarious. So a follow up below. Let's see here. So wow, 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 wow. So we know as K had been arguing, but spot on. Never to this level. Wow. Yeah. Later today, they will be with Kay's family for holiday celebrations. Oh, hell. And is gasoline going to be added to the fire today? Ooh, okay. Let's take a look here. So tell us about this family gathering. Will the fired or end or police department be called? See what we got here. And I feel like we want these. I also wanted this one here. Over here. Alright, let's see what we got going on here. Well. Well. It's interesting. We got like two cards and a offset cards, two cards and offset card and two cards and offset. So there is this kind of interesting print here. We'll see. The reason I went hmm is because we got the nine of cups coming in here. And the nine of cups is like dreams come true kind of energy. It is a hermity energy. And I wonder with two cards and one card, two cards and one card, two cards and one card, if if one of them doesn't go, I mean, if they don't, they just go alone. But the nine of cups, if they do go, it feels like you know, everything's fine. And everyone knows it's not, but they put on this. We're fine. We're fine. What are you talking about? You know, like a scary movie, the looks. So I feel like they're doing that, but let's see what unfolds here. Cause it's like, it almost feels like why, what would have two feet and then one foot like clunk, 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 clunk. But let's see what this is here. So these two cards are, oh, no. We got the tower card. Judgment Day has arrived. Got the judgment card, the tower card coming in here. Ooh, and then the king of ones. Well, the king of ones is an energy of you know, they can bridle their energy. They can control their tempers and all that. Okay, so united front is what this is. So the two cards are what's going on inside them and the outside card is what people are being shown. Or attempted to be shown. So that makes sense. So we'll bring them like this. Okay. So even though there's a lot of stuff going on on the inside between them, they're definitely have this calmer demeanor on the outside. Just their normal back and forth, which people expect. But they don't know the burning tower that's going on underneath it. It's almost like a, you know, like a, there's this house on fire, but they put up a giant poster. That is the house not on fire. And everyone's like, but we see smoke over there and, and like someone's like a little kid. But there's smoke and the parents are like we don't talk about this. Interesting. Okay. Let's see what else we have here. So we've got the, the king of swords. One of them very much in their minds. Are we having cups? No, strength card, Leo energy. Inner strength. So one's in their mind, one stepping into their courage and they're showing the world the knight of swords. So movement of communication, they are communicating in the outside world. Seems like they're really keeping it under wraps. So far, we're controlling our stuff. We're staying, you know, controlled and on the outside, it's, you know, knight of swords is this movement. We can get through this. And then we have the six of cups. So this childlike energy, the ace of cups. So underneath the surface, a lot of emotions here. And what's being shown on the outside and eight of swords. So flow of communication again, you know, letting go of things that communication and thoughts and beliefs that don't serve anymore. So it does feel here, especially with this children. I think they're like, well, there's children around. Let's just keep it cool. Let's just, you know, we'll do with all this later kind of energy. So I don't feel like there's fuel added to the fire. I think with all, and I think, but all this energy I'm picking up that they're kind of like in this still kind of shock. But let's just, let's just keep this between us right now. And let's try to do our best to you know, smile and interact with everyone. So it's alright, let's go, you know, and, and so I feel like, I don't feel like there's feel added to the fire. In fact, being around people almost makes them things feel normal a little bit for him, helps them kind of get back into this feeling of normalcy and the normal fighting, not, not the, not the extreme, you know, kind of energy. So that's good. For everyone involved. There's not going to be any police called. And let's see what we have here. Yeah, we have this new moon tomorrow too, with the new moon in Gemini. Got this new moon and it says, involve yourself in busy work. Do something to keep your mind busy. Yeah. So I feel like this is that energy of this will keep us distracted, involved with other people where we're not needing to talk to ourselves. Cause I don't feel like they've really talked since. They just short, small talk to be able to go to this thing and put on the front, you know, kind of energy. So hopefully that makes sense. That's what I feel is coming in June. Thank you again for your multiple donations. I greatly appreciate those. So many blessings to you. Right. And then Maria P, you are up and you have two. So thank you for your donations via Z PayPal. I believe you also have a free reading. I didn't grab that out. So it will be down below. So you'll have another link down in the free readings for your the, the free reading. I didn't grab those out this time. So my bad. But they'll be down there. They're easy. It'll just be a, a link that you can click on to find it. Alright, so Maria, thank you for your first donation. Let's give this a little shuffle, shuffle, I guess. So while these thoughts and feelings towards you today, alright, let's take a look here and see. Feelings and thoughts. We have more than that. I think these are for your next one here. What will Wally be up to today and tomorrow? Today's Sunday, right? Oh, cause Memorial Day, right? Happy Memorial Day. I'm totally like, what's tomorrow? Aren't they working? No, it's a holiday, right? So today and tomorrow. An update on the dark side. This and this, ooh, and this too. And what were his thoughts when we talked about us being together for a year already? The end of June. Wow, right? I'm old. That's what he thought. I can't believe it's been a year already. And then any other, any particular thing that he's planning over the year? Or just planning, but for the year. Alright. So that's it. Okay. So thoughts and feelings, we got eight of cups and ace of wands. I think we got the eight of cups a couple of times ago here. But the ace of wands is passion, of course. So they're very the energetic and physical attraction is really there and kicking in there for you. Towards you. And the eight of cups is movement of emotion. As my voice is trying to leave again, but there's this you know, balanced four cups on each side. And also this shift away from leaving old emotions behind with other people and, you know, everything that's going on in their life. And I just feel like there's this wonderful feeling of equality between emotions and feelings and, and this passion here. Thoughts, I don't, and well, it does feel like the thoughts, they're, they're thinking about the differences in between what they've experienced in the past and with you and how they're grateful for it. Cause they do have this feeling of leaving emotion behind and going, I'm I'm glad, I'm glad. Cause I didn't want to repeat of past relationships and you are different. In a good way. So I like that. What's it gonna do today? The magician. Oh, it seems like there's a lot of work going on. Boom, boom, boom. Action, action, action. Go, go, go. Just a lot of, lot of action, uh, energy going on. So it's like they got a lot of stuff to get done today so that tomorrow can be an actual holiday. And he can just not worry about things. Today's getting everything done, kind of energy. Tomorrow, the empress, it feels like you know, that's mother nature, mother nurture energy. So they, they just want to be able to take care of themselves, but it does feel like there's family get togethers and that there is a lot of expectations and that we have to do this. This is what family does. So it may be even that's mother energy if his mom is still around. But it does feel like there's a divine feminine energy that's in charge. That says, this is what we're all doing. And everyone's like, yes, ma'am, this is what we're gonna do. So they're kind of all just doing this family get together kind of thing going on. To check, check, we did it, but he's looking at enjoying it because he feels like he can relax a bit tomorrow. And take care of himself a bit and just you know, kind of thing. Updates on the dark side? Yep, page of wands. Go, go, go. Energy, energy, energy. List, list, list of getting stuff done. There is some movement of communication, seeing things differently. Does feel like there's a bit of calm here right now. Going from choppy waters to calmer waters. So I feel like this is good. And the full card is this feeling of letting go of expectations. Which does happen when you stop caring as much and your thoughts are changing. And your energy is changing. You don't care as much about, well, if I do that or don't, they're gonna get upset. That's, well. That's up to them. I'm used to it by now, kind of energy. I just feel like they're like, I'm doing a lot to get things taken care of and stuff, but the amount of anxiety around not completing it has dropped and dropped and dropped. And I feel like there is this feeling of freedom, like they feel like they've I'm, I'm doing things because I want to do them. And not because I fear things anymore. Like the, oh, if you don't keep the dragon happy, the dragon's gonna burn things. Well, I got a new vest asbestos suit that protects me from fire. So hopefully that makes sense. What were his thoughts about you guys being together? Eight of swords. I like this movement. I think there's like this reflection on how much they've let go. This is letting go of anxiety and realizing those thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that used to make you feel blinded and bound and trapped and restricted. And they're looking like, wow, over this last year, how much that they've changed in their mindset and how they perceive things in a positive way. Yeah, they look at, wow, the ending of one cycle, the beginning of a new adventure. They're looking at it as an accomplishment. In a way, but also they're looking at how, again, how things have changed and how they ended old cycles. And how things are different with you than they've had in the past. So I like that. And then the hangman. Yep. It's all about transformation. Seeing things, not feeling like they have to rush or anything about anything like, oh, it's a year. I gotta do something now, right? Which is good for you to do too. Let go any expectations. It's just information. At a year, you're supposed to do this. You should do this. You should blah, blah, blah. What does that do? Expectations equal disappointment. We expect something, we get less and less instead of, you know what? I'm going to focus on the gratitude that, wow. You know, that we've been together this long. We've done this much together. There's been this amazing stuff, you know? Focus on the celebration of it, not the expectations of things around it. Is he planning anything in particular right now? Oh, well, I have the star card. There's hope. It's a hope card. But it's a dream come true card too. So I do feel like he's trying to plan something that would commemorate, you know, the, the joy that he feels and the, you know, the gratitude that, that he have for the, the journey and the adventure. So they're, they're planning something, but it's a secret. You can't know. Let something be a surprise for a change. My God, woman. Alright, just kidding. That's, that's kind of your spirit guides. So let's see here. Let's get you a happiness card. Then we'll pull your other reading here. Alright, there we go. You got the little rainbow coming in here and it's apologize. Build bridges instead of burning them down. So this isn't about the, I don't feel like there's something that you need to apologize for, maybe to yourself. You know, give yourself the apology you've been looking for from someone, but this is about build bridges. Don't destroy them. Which is an energy of, sorry, itch, itch, itch. You know, building the bridges, build through gratitude instead of destroying bridges through expectations. So that's a good visual to go, I want to build things, not destroy things. I destroy things through expectations. I build things through gratitude. I love that. I'm going to use that. So thanks, spirit guides. Alright. So that's for the first one. So thank you for that donation. And then number two, let's take a look in what we have going on. So appreciate that. So how will the week go for you at work? Let me bring this over here so I can see a little better. There we go. Alright. So how will this week go for you at work? So based on current energies. What do you know about this week at work? I don't feel like it was just the two. When you went to the second floor for your meeting last week on Thursday, what did people think of you in that meeting? Okay. That's what that was for. And then what does your superintendent Bob think of you? So what are Bob's thoughts? Sue, this one. This one. Alright, and then any new offer for a new position in the district? All of those? No. It's just bread as then peanut butter fingers. So any shuffle these up. Okay, got this one and this one for that. I feel like there's one more. I feel like this is it. Alright. So how will work go for you this week? Well, we like this. It feels like there's you have the ace of cups, which is heightened emotion. Happy new emotion. And the two of swords is it's like there's a choice to make this week. But there is this battle between the head and the heart. And here's the heart. Really wanting to be the leader. Choose me, choose me. Cause I feel like their decisions this week are at work are about close your eyes, open your heart. Cause your mind is like, well, I should do this, supposed to do this, da, 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 but like maybe a position or a direction or choices. You know, any kind of choices, important choices regarding work. Just close your eyes and open your heart. And where's your heart leading you? That's how you can make your decision here. But I feel like there is some important decisions to make this week and the ace of cups is a good energy. Coming in here about happiness and new emotion, but bright emotion that's coming in. When you went to the second floor for the meeting last weekend, Thursday, what did they think of you? You're a smarty pants? King of swords, you know, is an energy of they're very intelligent. They're very connected. They communicate well. Master of communication. So I feel like they felt like you presented yourself well and you were knowledgeable. And you came across as, you know, someone who thinks about things, uh, which is good in a positive way. So I like that. And then also the hanging man. Which is about seeing things from a different perspective, a higher perspective. It's like you're a big picture thinker, if that makes sense. That you're able to, I don't know if you like spoke up and gave a different perspective on something where like, wow, that, that's a good. I wouldn't think of it looking at it that way. And that's, that's wow, impressed. So it feels like it's very good overall picture that they felt for you there. And then your superintendent Bob, uh, on the surface, let's take a look here. So we got the two of cups. And the three of swords, which is heartbreak here. It's interesting. I feel like you remind them of someone that broke their heart. And we'll see here on the, the bottom of the deck here. But I feel like that, that they see you and they're like, you remind them like either of like an ex lover or ex-wife or a daughter or someone that doesn't talk to them anymore. Because it's an important relationship with the two of cups. But there's this feeling of like, oh, kind of energy there, which is interesting. It's like, oh, wow. So if you have a chance to go in their office, look for pictures on their desk or whatever. Who's that? Cause it looks just like you. Not just like, but it's similar where you remind them in ways, I feel like looks. Like maybe the way you do your hair or makeup, the way you dress or your attitude. I just feel like there's something about you that reminds them of that. But underneath the surface, they do have the two of pentacles, uh, which is about a balanced individual. They see was balanced. That you, you know, flow harmony, you're, you it just, it feels like a, a good you're, you're a good, well-rounded is the word I was looking for. Well-rounded, balanced person. And then they're like, and then they cry softly as you leave their office. No, I'm just kidding. My daughter or, you know, no, I'm just kidding. They don't do that. But I just feel like that's important to know. That'd be interesting to find out. But I, but I, I, but you're for who you are at work and everything, they, they, they think you do well. And then any offer at a new position, you know, the king of ones. You know, and I feel like we've got this energy here. Cause the king of ones is like, you're, instead of doing what you think you're supposed to do, it's like, there is this energy of like wanting to decide what is you really want in life. Not, well, this seems to be like the way to go. But what is it that you truly want? Cause let's see what this underlying energy is. But the king of ones, it's like they clear the throne room. And they're like, everyone's opinion, put it in the table or on the box over there, whatever. But I'm going to decide what I want. And I feel like inside, this is what you're trying to determine is what is it that you want to do with your life? Where is it that you want to go? Kind of energy. You have the six of ones. Again, here's this energy of victory and movement, but energetic flow. And that's like, I feel underneath, you're kind of just going where things are taking you. You haven't really decided. It's kind of like your life has been reactionary a lot. And then you got to a place where you didn't because you were like, there was so much going on, you had to just survive. You were in survival mode. You were like, I just need to go along to get along. And I did. And then what, you know, you just, okay, well, this is great. I'll go to this. Okay. I'll do this. And it's it's like you're reaching a point in your life now where you're like I, I just been kind of going with the flow of things. To not rock the boat, not tip things. But now I have an opportunity. What do I want? And I kind of feel like this is what this is. And the creator, yeah, you have the power to say no to things and to create your life here. And so it's like, is it, is that what you want or what you think you're supposed to want? Because whatever you put your mind to, whatever you decide and go, alright, I've made a decision that king of ones is I've make a decision. Uh, and I'm going to put a plan together. I'm going to put action behind it, right? Because of it, you're like, well, I guess I want a new job in the district. But if you're like, this is exactly, I know what I want and why I want it. And this is what I'm going to do and I'm going to head toward it. So I like it. Once you decide, then doors will open and you will do the things, your energy and your mind will start working to take you in those directions. Alright. So that's what they have for that. And let's get you a happiness. So for work next week. Alright, there we go. Yep, we got the little, little sun going on here. And it says, be yourself. Don't try to fit into someone else's mold. There you go. Like we were talking about, I love these little cards, little short and simple, but to the point. Yeah. Don't try to be something. Who do you want to be? What do you want to do? This is a big decision point. Alright. And then we will pull your other reading here once we get to that as well. Alright, so thank you again for your donations. I greatly appreciate those. Out of the way here. Alright. And then we have guerrilla means war. Hello guerrilla. Thank you so much for your patience in getting to your reading and for your donation. Let's bring that up here. Alright. So with June of this year, just around the corner, can you believe it? It's just like whoosh. You're wondering what does the coming month have in store for you spiritually? You're yearning for sunlight. Are you in a rainy, rainy place? Alright, let's take a look here. Here comes the sun though. So. Alright, so spiritually, what does June hold for you here? Want you to know about June. I feel like you have those. So those and those. Which are leading you kind of step by step here. Towards these. Is that it? I feel like there's this one too. I think this is what's going on above the ground. Okay. So the bottom of the deck, the overall energy for June is the queen of swords. Which she is a balance between. The mind and the heart. So it's like spiritually. I feel like there's, you know how when you, I know stuff, but then you know it. It's like when it drops into your heart and it's like, wow. So it's like you and you. I feel like there's stuff that you've been, you know, learning and. Understanding and, you know. Actions you've been taking and doing different things, but I just feel like. Suddenly in June, there's this stuff that just drops and you're like, wow, I can feel it in my being. I know it. Instead of, I'm aware of it, but knowing it is different. I, I feel like you get that. So June is like that. So let's take a look and see what this is about. So you do have the mother star. The power of yes. And a piece of this. Yes, card. This is unique to this deck is about. Whatever I focus my energy on is what I draw to me. And so when I focus on gratitude and higher vibration, these are the things I draw. If I focus on want and need and lower vibration that are rooted in lack. And what I fear will come in or a fear will leave or blah, blah, blah. I make this lower vibration. I draw more of that lower vibration stuff to me. So this is that, well, I know that, but then you put it into action in June. Where in a huge way and you're like, whoa. This really is true. So I like this. And then below that nine of ones. Yeah. So this makes sense. You're taking your power back and you, you're, you're focusing here on. What feels like it has been a block starts to flow in June because you do get that. It's not just a belief, it's a part of your life. Where you're like, no, I'm going to focus on gratitude, whether it's. Putting alarms on my phone that every waking hour it says gratitude that brings me back to gratitude. So my new habit becomes focusing on. What am I grateful for? What am I love in my life? And then that stuff grows instead of what's missing in my life. And then the missingness of life gets bigger. Focus on what you love and then more of that comes in. But that's why I feel like a big piece of it is that you're putting that into practice. As a part of who you are and not just something that you could do. It's like. This stuff is actually working and it, it's real and it's for me. So I'm going to do it. You also have the five of swords. Yeah. The battle between the heart and the mind. With the five of swords, the queen of swords helps bring this together. Yeah, the page of sorts. Seeing things from a higher perspective, gaining a lot of clarity and knowledge. Again, it's higher knowing, not human knowing that comes in. And I feel like in June, there's spiritually also, there's this letting go of the need to defend. Or to correct other people or change other people. It's like you realize. That I battle when I have a small T truth rooted in fear, trying to prove that. My small T truth rooted in fear. Is more truer than their small T truth rooted in fear, when they're both untrue. Because the ace of swords and the queen of swords, they. Give you the ace of swords, which shows you the capital T truth of the higher realm, which that's the truth. Capital T truth rooted in unconditional love doesn't need defending. We feel we have to defend our small T truths. So when you, when you're able to sit in your higher truth. You have less conflict both in here and out here too. And I feel like that's a big piece that kind of clicks into place too in June. And then let's see what's coming in from above here. Yep, the tower trusting that. Things and people and situations that are moved out of your life are for you. So I, I feel like you're gaining this trust in June too, that. You know, you got me. I trust that you are a kind. And unconditionally loving creative force, whatever you believe your higher powers to be. And that when things happen here, it's not happening to me. I'm not on an out of control drama train that's about to leap off the tracks and explode. But that I am. On a monorail train like at Disneyland or Disney world and there's perfect stops, things that happen are happening. For a reason, like universal studios. Where something explodes and that's part of the tour, you know, here comes the flood, that's part of the tour. Things are happening because it's part of my experience for me, not happening to me. Right? And there's this trust energy that comes in just going, I trust my path. And if something gets removed, I know that it wasn't for me, or it's making space for something even better. If something's being blasted out of my path, I know it was an obstacle. Now I can move forward, something that's more in alignment with who I am. So I like this. Again, a lot of ahas that are coming. That's what these little steps are going forward here. Wheel of fortune. So the wheels of fate are turning in June. Again, the tower card and the wheel of fortune is. The wheel of for me, life is happening for me. So I just feel like that's important that the tower and the will of fortunately, they work so well together with that energy. Coming in. And you have the three of cups. Three of cups spiritually, on one side, the three of cups is. Your spiritual posse, all of your spirit guides, your guardian angel, other angels, loved ones on the other side, ancestors. Unicorns, fairies, whatever you believe, these higher powers. Of beings of unconditional love and light, you're surrounded by them. You have a. A multitude of them and they are supporting you, bringing you messages in June, always, but specifically more in June. But there's also a spiritual community and you might be getting information about. People who think along the same wavelength as you. So that you can have a place that you can go and feel supported and support others. So I feel that's important for June two with that. You have the sun card. Yeah, this bright light of energy shining on every part of your life. I just realized that looks like Taylor Swift. Anyway. Something about shaking it off, right? One of her songs. Maybe there's a Taylor Swift song that really means something to you. But the sun card is shining a bright light on every area of your life to where. Even the cobwebs in the corner, you're seeing again, this brightness. Clarity. It's just like, there's this bright brightness of your, your path here. The magician. Yes, this is like that over here. You're really focusing on how you're bringing your energy into the world. And. It's like, how are you uniquely sharing this unconditional love energy in your heart with the world in your own special, unique way? I just feel like you're getting clarity that comes in here. With all of this sun brightness and the magician coming in together. The spotlight, I feel like you're really being brought out of your shell a bit too. And that could be with this three of cups. You might be finding like a best friend or two. With that three of cups where you just feel like three peas in a pod. So like, if you're like a group and you're like, ugh, I know I'm a big introvert. So. When I think of like, you know, being in public with a bunch of groups of people, I'm like, oh. Can I just like hang out with one or two people? I like deep conversations, not parties where there's shallow conversations. It's just like, no. I'd rather be at home by myself. Focusing on something than be. Have spending energy on shallowness. And I feel like that's kind of what you are too. And there might be here. An expansion of your spiritual gifts. And again, this, this shiny light on it. So you can discover how you want to share that uniquely with the world in your own special way. And. It doesn't have to be a certain way. I know that's when we fall into spirituality, we're like, well, everyone's doing this. Guess this is what I should do. It's like, no, be yourself, do it your way. You can use that as a example, but then put your spin on things and do things you, your way. It's like, if you want to do. Healing energy. Yeah, Reiki, it's structured. But you can do things in your own way. You don't have to follow these rules. That's humans that do that. And that's okay for some people, ritual and symbols and doing different things helps them. Connect with it stronger and do it. For others, it can be an obstacle and it can feel oppressive, oppressive. So, you know, just. Trust yourself and how you want to express it, right? Right. Let's see what else we've got here. So you have the five of ones. Yeah. Movement of energy from lower vibration. To higher vibration. So I like this, you know. Again, we were just talking about energy work, but your spiritual energy is changing. It's in June, it's moving to a higher level. It's expansive here. Yeah. And the four of ones. Stabilizing, five and the four of ones. Creativity. This is joy and celebration. There might even be a gathering of a celebration. You know, maybe that's where you're meeting some people too with a. If there's some sort of retreat that's available in June and a spirituality practice. That you would like to learn or go to, that's very supported there. But overall, it feels very powerful here for you. Anything else around your spirituality for June? It just feels like expansion, that brightness of the sun. I really like. And then we'll grab a happiness fortune cookie here for you too. Excuse me, like a crunch of my cough drop here. So what else for June? What's the fortune cookie for June? All right. It's this one right here. It was this one. Cause you have the feather here. And the feather, it can be a quill, it could be something writing or it could be, yeah, write it down. Process difficult feelings by getting them out of your head. So doing some journaling, some processing of those things in June can help you too. And it can be. Capturing some of the transformation, celebrating the journey you've been on. Cause I kind of feel too that. Getting stuff written down. It's like this becomes a. Page in your survival manual of how you survived your life. But that, that page will also become a page in someone else's survival manual. So it's about sharing that as well. So I feel like that's what's coming in for you, Guer. Hopefully that resonates. That's what they have for you right now. So many blessings to you. Right. Sudashni, you are up. Let's get your timestamp in here. So Sudashni, thank you so much for your donation. You want to know was Johann cheating over the past? Four months while being with you. Oh, oh, okay. Well, let's find out here. I know. It's always, that's one of the roughest, toughest. Adventures in this humanity, isn't it? You know, the not knowing and then finding out. What's, it's kind of like the not trusting is the huge piece. Sometimes just finding out is like, just so I know. But it's the not knowing sometimes that it feels even worse of like, are you, are they or not there? Are they doing it again? You know, kind of energies. Been there a few times. I, I get it. It's. Nice being on the other side. So you'll get through this one way or another. All right. So let's take a look here. Johann. Have they been? Hiding things and being on the sly here. Let's see what else spirit wants you to know here. All right. Let's bring these in. It's like one, one, two, three. Five of wands on the bottom of the deck, we do have, this is an energy of. Drama in a way. Lower vibration to higher vibration. Of energy, but a change of energy that's coming in here too. Let's see where this is leading us here. We've got the queen of ones. So there is a bit of fiery individual here. Fiery female, the page of swords. This is about clarity. I feel like there's some clarity and communication that's been going on between them and. A fiery. Feminine energy. We know the page of cups. Page of swords, page of cups and the empress. I'll verify with these other cards. But with all these. Female, 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 females on these cards. And communication and passion and the empress is like all the queens together. Which also is sensuality and, and that. Does feel as if there is a lot of otherness here. And it may not just be like with one kind of energy here. But let's take a look here. Let's, let's just get. Let's get the, the, let's just get to it here. Three of pentacles. Someone trying to be true to themselves. The five of pentacles. Yeah. These feelings of being the fear being left behind, being left out in the cold. Being abandoned. You know, it's, those are the energies on the, you know, codependency. Where. When they feel like they can't give to someone, like if you're a big giver and a, you know, someone who gives a lot. And if they feel like I can't keep up with you. They're this lower self-esteem, which the five of pentacles represents, like this feeling of lack, I'm not enough. I'm going to be abandoned. I'm going to be left out. They try to find. Things in the outside world to make them feel like, well. I can give to these other people. They try to find people who are in their mind. Needier or lower than them. And, and they're like, well, they want me, they need me. I don't feel like you need me. But they need me. And so they get this feeling of. I can give to someone or someones and, you know, it feels that way. So. We have the nine of pentacles, which is about. The hermit, being alone, being to yourself kind of energy. So I, I really do. Hate being the bearer of these, but I know this is for you and it's good for you to know it. Having been through it myself, that's probably why I feel really bad about it too. Cause I'm like, oh, I hated it when I felt this way three times. But it feels like your heart is being like ripped open the first time. I was actually talking to, I think it was you that was talking to you. Now that I'm going, yeah, it was you Sue. Duh. You know, sometimes enough the sharpest tool in the shed. So all the stuff that we talked about, right? With the, you know, having realized the first cut and the second cup and the, the, the cut and the third cut. After a while, it's like, yeah, it didn't, it didn't. Because I started to realize this isn't about me. Their actions don't define me. My, their actions tell me about them. And it was interesting because my mom, she, for the longest time, had a lot of. Resentment towards my father for cheating on her, probably throughout their 20 something odd year marriage. And even up to like 10 years ago, when I lived up near him, I actually was. About six, seven, eight. Well, you know, close enough. Eight, nine years ago. And I told her. Cause whenever, cause he did, he lives in Hawaiian islands. With his, he's married now. To his fourth wife and my. Whenever my family would interact with them, sometimes she'd get upset. And I'd be like. Why, why, why are you so angry? And she would like, well, him and I can't believe what he did and. You know, and I'm like, you, you do realize that you're not to blame, right? And she would look at me like, of course. She goes, if I was good enough, he wouldn't have cheated and he would have done it. And I'm like. If it was you, don't you think wife number two and wife number three and all the girlfriends, everyone he had in between. Would have made him happy then. And I just saw her, this little light bulb go bing. And she was like. What? Wait, say that again. And it really sunk in. That, yeah. I go, you couldn't make him happy because he was unhappy on the inside. You know, he's found himself more now and his journey is in life and he's very happy where he. You know, in his life now. But I go, you couldn't have made him happy back then because he was unhappy in the inside. And he can't make you happy. You have to choose to be happy. And that's the whole thing is like, our happiness isn't here, not out here. Our interactions with people can make it easier or harder for us to be happy, but they can't make us happy. Right? Let's see, speaking of happiness, we've got our little happiness cards here. So let's see what your fortune cookie for this is. So I do feel like they have, and I feel like they will um continue to do so until they find their inner happiness, because the outside world, all the people in the world can't fill up the hole in our heart. Uh, that we're trying to fill with conditional love when we're looking to fill it with our eternal unconditional love of above. Yeah, we got this little new moon with a heart in it and it's compliment someone, their smile will make you smile. I feel like that's you. Look in the mirror, compliment yourself. Tell yourself you love you, give yourself a high five in the mirror to say you're awesome. And say something that you love about yourself that you would truly compliment uh yourself with. Excuse me, got me all choked up. Not really, it's my sinus, sorry. So that's what they have for you, Sudashni. So many blessings to you, hang in there. All right. And then up next, we do have Sudashna. So let me grab your timestamp here for two. So let us bring those over here. Thank you for your dual donations. Some question down below, and here's a second question here too. Okay. So your first one, Sudashna, you wanted to know, is he your future spouse and any chances of marriage there? All right. Let's take a look here. So is Tat, 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 I kind of murder their name. So this person, Mandal. Are they your future spouse? Any chances of marriage there? Okay. So based on your current path and energies, are they your future spouse? So let me just take a sip here. All right. Um, energy in the bottom of the deck, well. We do have the Ten of Cups on the bottom, which is one of those family cards and uh relationship love cards. There's definitely a lot of emotion there. Let's see what else we have. The Page of Ones, which does represent a a passion, a heightened passion. Energetic and physical attraction. We do have the, okay, well, there's a lot of energy here, the Ten of Ones, which is burden and the Nine of Swords. Lot of expectations, thoughts and beliefs and mindsets here. Just feels like there's a lot of fear energy about not being, well, just let there's long list of things that has to be and should be and need to be and have to be and must be. With this here. Let's see what else comes in here because I'm so sorry, there's a lot of this. It's like this is what has to be worked through in order for this to work, uh, is letting go a lot of these roles and to move the energy from trying to live up to things to living and loving life instead. That is what is needed here. Otherwise, if it's like feeling like you're having to meet some requirements and do things, that's just a downward spiral. That's like expectations that suck the life out of a relationship. And it's like changing our energy from who someone is supposed to be in a relationship. Uh, or just who someone is supposed to be, who they're supposed to be and bring into a relationship, how their relationship is supposed to start and be and progress and end and who I'm supposed to be in the relationship. That's exhausting. That's that Ten of Ones burden. So much and the nightmare and insomnia of the Nine of Swords, all these rules, what, oh my gosh. We focus in on what's not happening instead of celebrating what is. And so I feel like that's a big piece of what has to happen. Really, in any relationship, this is huge for this one here. Yeah, because with this, you would end up being alone without that happening. It would end up ending because it would be too much. Nine of Pentacles, Hermits, energy of the nine. And the Pentacle suit being the outside world, it'll end up being, um, the marriage would end up and ending if that doesn't get done. Um, and the Seven of Ones is the courage, shining bright, not dimming light, being oneself. Um, is what would be needed in order, uh, you know, for this to to work. It's not not fearing and trying to be who everyone needs me to be. It's like you being you, yeah, you know. Um, oh. Well, maybe not. You've got the Tower card here, which is about a sudden ending too, even after that. And the Six of Cups, there's past life connections that you guys do have that have been here for a while. Yeah, this reconciliation energy too. Sorry, I was just seeing this movie plot in my head. Hell knows why I out for it. Because it does feel like there's a, with this relationship, there's, there, there can be marriage, but it's like um, there's this the struggle, this burden that happens and then there's like a separation or an ending. And then there's a restart and then there's another ending. So it's like, because this is someone coming back from the past, it's like, yeah, we're together and then it ends or we're separated and then we get back together and then it ends again. So there is this pattern in this, you know, working through things, um, energy that's here. Um, so there's a chance of marriage, but it is definitely there's like a couple separations and or end or endings and beginnings that happen. But ultimately, I feel like it does end in the end. With the, with this Tower card that's here. Let's see what the happiness cards in here. What's your other question here too? Does it have to do with them? Okay, yeah, let's take a look here. You know, with all that, um, and that's based on current energy. You know, that's why I I feel like if we don't deal with all these expectations and all the energy that we're investing in trying to have something be, you know, something that um, that's how it ends, but even on the bottom with the Ace of Ones, it's all about your energy and what you do. Um, and and like we're talking about when, because expectations are what suck the life out of relationships and uh jobs and dreams and everything else too, because when we, when we are focused on all these opinions that we've had growing up on, and they all sound like supposed to, this is what someone's supposed to do, this is what someone should do, this is what someone has to do, this is what someone must do. All this stuff that feels like law and rules and expectations, expectations equal disappointment. And it does focus in on what someone is not doing, because we're checking the list and going, okay, they're doing this, they're not doing this, they're doing this. They're doing this, they're not doing this, they're not doing this, they're not doing this. See how it ends up focusing on not, instead of what am I grateful for in what someone is doing and what do I love about them? And what do I enjoy? And and if it's an arranged marriage or if it's something like that, it's still, we have to focus on the gratitude and all those things, because those are the things that then grow. Otherwise, I'll focus on lack and what's not there and I get more lack and that's what downward spirals, that's where the endings happen. So if you keep on the path of that, then there is an ending. And then you get back together and there's another ending. And it may never go back together again. After that, I didn't see the energy of a second reconciliation, you know, that Six of Cups was like, this is a pattern that has been repeated and um, you know, in this lifetime. Um, let's see what they have here for your happiness card. See what else they want to give us here. What is this? A candle. So it has a candle. And it says, don't let feelings be facts. Give yourself some space to calm down before you reply. Yeah, because this is recognizing our fears make us react and then we but before reacting, when something's happening, we step back, we breathe, we come back to our senses. Instead of acting like our, from our child self, a two-year-old with a pet hissing cat that attacks or runs away. We're able to come in and as a responsible adult and uh from a intelligent, compassionate, loving place respond instead of from a two-year-old's perspective, which is not intelligent, unkind and unloving, hissy attack or hissy run away or hiss, attack and then run away, right? So something to be aware of going into it. There is Ten of Cups underlining the energy, there is joy possible, but there are, they do say this is what needs to be looked at to keep that from happening. And then thank you for your additional donation. Let's dive deeper here. The next actions of them uh towards uh you in terms of love in any timeframe. So let's take a look here. What's going on here? Uh, next actions. Look, these are there. Any timeframe, I feel like it's this. And will you come into a committed relationship based on current energy and awareness? Okay, if like those are that. All right, so their current, um. Yeah, so, oh yeah, it was next actions to begin to go with, like he said, actions. So the Eight of Swords is, here's those expectations, Eight of Swords, they're, it's becoming aware here. So they're also, of course, working through all this, every human does, because we're all given this long list of roles that make us feel, you know, like this person blinded and bound and trapped and restricted, this energy. Frustration, anxiety, trapped. So this is where they're, they're working through this feeling of, am I walking into a cage and I'm gonna have all these roles that I have to do and they've got all these things even outside of what you believe. They have all this different type of belief that they were growing up with. No one has the exact same expectations and roles, because we all grow up with different influence. So we all think of things differently and and approach things differently. And that's what they're trying to get moving behind before they can take action in terms. And so the Eight of Swords is a good card because they're figuring and moving past some of this restrictive feeling. Once they do that, yeah, they have the world card. They do not want to be a caged lion. Yeah, they really are here still in this, the Chariot card is a good card of victory and movement, but it's also with all of this combination of these three, it really is this energy of them wanting to still make a decision. It's the power of choice card. And with all this others, it's like, I don't want to be surrounded by all these expectations because I don't want to disappoint. I don't disappoint my family, don't disappoint you or your family or anyone else or and they just feel like this is like stepping into all these roles, like here's the bar, you walk in, you have to hit this. It's like, oh God, you know, if it was like, here's the low bar, okay, this is a, I can go into this type of relationship because I can just be me. But when you're all this, it takes all this energy just to get back up to zero. And that's what sucks the life out of a relationship is, you know, trying to do all this stuff and we can't even hardly ever get up to that. It's like with as high as expectations are, they can get here every once in a while, hit it, but we live in lack instead of having very little expectations and they're, and all this is abundance instead. So hopefully that makes sense, but I feel like there's, action is delayed for a little while here. Let's see about timing. You know, the Five of Ones, there's still some conflict that has to be worked out before they'll be able to act here. So I do feel like there is a delay in there. It's all about them. The fear of walking into a cage and and they're delaying uh making these choices here. We'll take a look here on the path as we are walking now. Will you end up in a committed relationship? So it's gonna take some work with the Eight of Pentacles, that is putting in the blood, the sweat, the tears to get the fruit of the labor. There is uh expectations equal disappointment, the Three of Swords. So that's the work that has to be looked at here. It can be done with the Wheel of Fortune. It can, you know, the tuna for you, the Wheel of Fortune is a abundance card. But again, they're re reinforcing here. There can be, it's not guaranteed, but the the, the work has to be put into letting expectations go, focusing on what we're grateful for, what we love about someone, what we love about a situation, what we're grateful for in the situation, not the things that have to happen in order for me to be lovable and for for me to be enjoying something. All the roles out the, out the door and coming back to the heart, not the mind where all these roles exist. So I know, but you know, it, it, I know it kind of sounds like, oh my God, is this a good reading or not? There's hope here, but you know, in reality, we have to do that with any relationship. Because it's not just really this one, it's every relationship. We'll end up in those kind of scenarios if we don't um you know, change our energy and how we're investing in, right? If we want to feel like we're in a prison, but we keep all that stuff, but we set ourselves free, we set everyone else free too. And then we can enjoy life instead of feel like we're serving a prison sentence. What do we have here? We've got the little diamond in the rough. And it says, ask for help, go an inch by yourself or a mile with others. So I like that, you know, you can ask for guidance and help from spirit. Or if you have, you know, resources that you can look at, how can I let expectations go? Um, and find that. A great book, if you have access to it, is um, The Path to Love by Deepak Chopra. I'd talk to uh Sudashni about that, if you guys know each other. But um, it's a great, um, it's a great awareness about our self-love and and uh I learned a lot about it through, for my relationships too. So I just, that came in and I thought I'd share that too. All right, so that's what they have for you right now, my dear. So thank you, hang in there. All right. So uh for the donations, lastly, but not leastly, we have Lori. So Lori, thank you so much for your donation. You're actually, your timestamp is one oh seven oh seven. How wonderful is that? And thank you for your generous donation. I appreciate that. And you'd like a general reading, all right. So let's find out what spirit has for you. Let me take a quick sip here. Okay. All right, so Lori, let's take a look. What does spirit want you to know? Okay, we're starting off here. And this equals these two together and these two together. Eleven equals twenty-two. No, it doesn't, but maybe it does. Let's see, what's above the surface here? Like those are above the surface and what's below the surface down here? Well, I don't want them to fall off the table. Let's just scooch these up. These are below the surface. We've got stuff going on below and stuff going on above and all this going on in the middle. All right, well, let's dive in here. So the bottom of the deck, you do have the Knight of Ones, so fast action energy, a lot of movement. Um, it is the quest of stepping into your power too, because all knights are on the quest, just what knights do, they quest. They're on the quest for the Ace of Ones, which is about new passion, focusing my energy. But really, this, I feel like there's this, about stepping into your power and realizing that you're not at the whim of the outside world. You're not a baby in a baby seat in the backseat of a car and someone's driving the car that you have the power. You're actually the one driving the bus. The creator is your co-pilot, sitting in the passenger seat, working the radio, the air conditioning and the heating and um whatever energy you put forward is what they put in the GPS and all your spiritual posse are all these puppies in the backseat that you just said, uh, you know, you want to go for a, and that's all you have to say. They're like, ride, let's go. They don't care where we're going. There, there's no judgment, there's no wrong choice. Like, where do you want to go? What do you want to do? And that's a great energy to really sit in, because when we, sometimes we get into that, like, well, And that's a great energy to really sit in because when we sometimes we get into that, like, well, my life is supposed to be, should be and you know, isn't there some sort of agreement or soul contract or that? That's all human energy. Um we come down here to experience and we're always experiencing. And we come down here with abilities and possibilities and intentions of how we want to help the collective and things we want to do, but if we don't do it, it's not like fail. They're just like, oh, you decided not to do it. That's alright, you know? There's no pressure uh from the heavens on us. It's all the pressures in here, right? But there is this taking your life into your own hands and deciding, what do I want to do with my life? What do I want to do? There's no wrong choice. There's no right choice, just different choices with different experiences and different outcomes. So it's like, alright. Alright, this gives me a different approach to any situation, right? So let's take a look here and we'll start here. You got the three of swords and the five of swords. So there is some disappointment and some conflict going in here. The head against the heart, uh the heart had some heartbreak, had some disappointment. The brain has created a lot of structure around supposed to be's and should be's because it didn't want to have to experience that again. It felt it need I need to protect you heart, so I'm creating this constructive things to make sure you don't feel these bad things again. And here's how we're gonna create things and rules so that you feel good things again. But in the meantime, the mind has become kind of a bully to your heart. And it's had it like with all these restrictions and all these roles going, no, 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 no. Let me put you on a harness. You can't just go over where you want. I am in control of you. That's what the mind felt it had to do to keep the heart from hurting itself, because it was a little toddler child that got into everything. But since then, the heart has matured and now it's an adult in a harness and it's going, do we really need this anymore? And the mind's like, you haven't shown me any different, right? Sorry, let me blow my nose real quick. Clearing out the mind, right? So I feel like that's kind of what's happening here is stepping into the power is realizing my heart can return to the throne and the mind, instead of bullying the heart, can now support the heart and where it wants to go. Because the heart is not just gonna go willy-nilly wherever. The heart is connecting to spirit and is wanting to guide uh instead of, you know, just, you know, being like foos rushing and bah, you know, it's the heart is more much more mature now. And so let's see where this is leading. These equals is leading to the ace of pentacles and the ten of cups. Yeah. So there is this new opportunity that you can move forward in, which is an opportunity of love, an opportunity of overflowing the ten of cups. Ace of Pentacles energy. So this is leading you. Um that's where the heart wants to take you and this is what is possible to move forward. As long as we start removing these constructs. It's like when you're a baby. You know, we put up a baby gate, right? So we don't fall down the stairs and break our neck. But as we become teenagers and adults, we don't need that anymore to keep us from falling down the stairs, but if we leave it in place, it's probably what we trip over and end up falling down the stairs with. So it's the removal of these the things that kept us safe now have become obstacles, right? And so there's this removal of this that comes in here. We got the king of cups. Yeah, looking for this perfect um what a perfect, it was a compatible individual that fits you like a glove. And the seven of pentacles, yeah, it's taking time. And it feels like there is some on one side of this, it's like last thing that grows on the fruit tree is the fruit. So, you know, it's gonna take some time to really determine what this is, because the mind has an idea on who this person should be. But the heart has a completely different idea of who this person, uh who they want. Uh and so there's some working out. Now that's where this conflict comes in. You know, the the mind keeps on giving the heart resumes. Well, here's this person and the heart's like, what are you thinking? And I go, I want this. And the heart, the mind goes, what are you thinking? And they're gonna do this, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do this. And they're like, simmer down, mind. That's where this conflict in the mind is working itself out. And that's why I feel like it's taking a little bit of time. And I feel like this is kind of relationship oriented, right? Yeah. So the nine of swords, here's the mind bringing in the nightmare, the insomnia, giving us a headache. And the wheel of fortune is, you know, the wheels of fate turning, uh bringing us forward. And and it is part of the process. The mind is like bringing up its concerns and the heart goes, you know, let's dismantle. Let's give me the screwdriver. I'm gonna dismantle this baby gate so I don't keep falling down the stairs. You know, it's time to remove these things. And I feel like the wheel of fortune is like the wheel, this feels like a clock. It's time to let some old ways of thinking go so that you can move into a different place. Let's see what's going on here below the surface and then we'll see what the advice from the heavens are. Below the surface, yeah, the death and the rebirth. There is this transformation that's going here. There is a little bit of fear of endings, like I feel like this has to do with a relationship, you know, like you've had people that you've lost in your life, maybe earlier in your life to do death or through abandonment feelings that kind of bubbles and rumbles below the surface where it's like, okay, let me look at that fear and realize and and there could be some you know, inner child concerns that have been pushed down for so long down there, they didn't. We don't know that they're even there, but they're running on autopilot. A great book that they're bringing to mind, if you haven't heard of it before, is it's The Presence Process by Michael Brown. It's P R E S E N C E by Michael Brown. There's a breathing exercise um through it all, but the even if you just read the book and don't do the breath work. Amazing, amazing information about charged emotions and how you can reparent yourself and embrace your inner child and give it that unconditional love and unconditional space to transform it and let that stuff um integrate into you. Instead of keeping it separate and charged, where it's still impacting you, we can it's like a hot potato that our inner child's been holding along. It's still hot. It didn't cool off. They're like, can you take this hot potato? It's been burning my hand for how many years? You know, and it's like, oh, boo-boo, come here. And I like this because I feel like this is that feeling and fears or some stuff down below that can be transformed. So if that resonates, uh check out that book. I highly recommend it. You also have the ace of ones. So here is this taking your power back energy that, you know, whatever I focus on grows and expands. And that is a good energy just to realize in our journey that when I focus on those expectations, the supposed to be, the should be, the need to be, the have to be, all these nine of swords and everything the brain is saying, it actually sucks the life out of something because the more I focus on what's not happening, then less stuff happens. So expectations are like a relationship in life. You know, I say destroyer, but it like it sucks the life out of life of anything. It's um it's like a candle that, you know, you have it. You put the top on it, it eventually goes out because it consumes all the oxygen. Expectations just suck the oxygen out of a relationship, out of a dream, out of anything. And um but when we focus, and that's what we're taught to focus on growing up. So there's no judgment there at all. We all are taught focus on those things. But when we switch it around and we focus in on gratitude for what we do love in our life and have had in our life, that's have energy that grows things, what we're focusing on. When I focus on want and need, that's actually lack energy. That's um because in order to want something and need something, that means I feel like I'm lacking something. So it's lack energy. And so what need actually pushes things further away from us because our energy is saying, I want to experience more want, more need, which means I can't get what I want and need. But um gratitude is what brings it toward us instead. Um so that's the stepping in. This is the, you know, the um here's the ones that you're looking for this. Knight is on the quest for it and here is, it's available to you down in here. Solar plexus chakra energy, right? You have the two of cups, so it is about relationships. Relationships are very important. They're saying one of the big things to be aware of with relationships is that every relationship is a reflection of my self-love. And so I can learn about myself when I look at my relationships and how I perceive it with others. And it's an expression of how much love I have for myself. Because I can't love someone more than I love myself, nor receive love from others more than I love myself. And so it's important, one of the biggest things I can do is grow my self-love, then it just improves everything, right? But you're like, I get it. I know that. Um so I like this energy underneath, but I feel like this is a lot of stuff that you've been flowing through and and taking big chunks and um but it's what's been fl- flowing below the surface along this path. Yeah, and the king of ones, yeah. You are deciding what you're wanting with this king of ones. You're just, again, there's that ace of ones, right? I now am stepping into my power. Thank you, all of you that have had all these opinions. There's all these self-appointed advisors, blah, 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 about who you should be, what you should do, la, la, la. You're like, thank you. Clear the throne room. Leave your opinions on the table or in that box if you must. Uh thank you for all that, but now I'm the ruler of my kingdom. I'm gonna make choices about what I want. Put a plan together and take action behind it and move forward with it. So again, this is like you, uh I love this about you taking your power back over your life, over relationships, where you want to head and what you want to do. Um a very powerful energy. The heavens wants you to know the two of ones. Here we go. You hold the power. Whatever you focus on is what grows and expands. But I feel like they're saying here that there is no, they want to reiterate with all that we said, there's no right or wrong choices, just different choices with different experiences. There's no judgment, but if you want to change um how you're approaching things, they will help you. All you have to do is ask. But um there's no wrong choice. It's like, what should I do? They're like, what would you like to do? What would you like to experience? You get to choose. We will support you in whatever you want to do. It's like going to a buffet and and they're like, what do you want to eat? And they're like, what should I eat? And they're like, what would you like to eat? Go and taste, you know, some stuff and pile more on the plate if that tastes good to you. If you're like, woo, you know, spit it out in the trash can. Don't get more of that. Go to, you know, start off with a dessert, you know, uh section, right? But it's like, find the stuff that you want, you know, there. So I like that for you. Page of ones. You can't make this up. So you know, there's all this power of all these ones. And the ace of swords, which is new communication, new clarity in your power that they've been bringing a lot of things across your path. So the ace of swords lots allows you to see things from a higher perspective, from capital T, truth of unconditional love. And it's double edged, allows you to question all of these swords, allows you to transform them from lower vibrational, you know, fears uh into higher vibrational um capital T truths and knowledge and wisdom. And so all of this is for growth and um but none of it's judgment, none of it's, there's not pass or fail, there's just experience. So if you're done experiencing what you want to experience in one thing, you can change it. There's never a, you know, uh unchangeable uh belief, because you control what story you want to put to things, you control what emotion you choose in each moment, you control what energy you focus on, you control your physical actions. You can't control anyone else's. So this is about you stepping into your power. So hopefully that resonates and helps. Let's see what your happiness fortune cookie is here. Boom, there it is. You got the little um beautiful rain clouds that are raining down and you got be silly, let yourself be bad at something. I like it. There's that let that judgment go, right? Be fun. We could, it's a playground. Why are we taking life so seriously, right? Let's um you know, get out and explore and try the buffet and what's this? What's this taste like? What's this taste like, right? Alright. Even Frankie, our uh uh our resident black lab, black Labrador. Uh she says, yes, have fun. Come bark at the squirrels with her. Or the neighbor. Alright, so that's what they have for you, my dear. Thank you again for your donation and many blessings to you. Alright, everybody. Thank you so much for your patience in getting to all your readings. That's the last of the donations and we'll now move into the free readings. These, of course, are one to two cards. We don't dive as deep. So these will move uh more quickly. So thank you for your patience in getting here. The um list of uh the order that I'll complete the readings is down in the description box of the video. After I'm done here, I will post a pinned comment that will list the um timestamps as well. So be on the lookout for that. And if you had any yesterday, uh any free readings that you had put in the morning session or the evening session, I didn't get to any free readings in those sessions, but I went back in the evening after my praying mantis session and did everything, like almost fifty readings last night. So uh be sure to go check those out if you had it yesterday too. Alright. Alright, so let's take a sip. And we'll dive in. So we'll start off with my YouTube channel members. I've got like four of those first. Excuse me. Must have another front coming in. I can feel that. So, alright, so Happy Pill, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. Should I got that right? Did I get that right? Yeah, okay. So Happy Pill, uh thank you for your donations earlier. You'd like a general reading for the week. So what does spirit want you to know about the week ahead? Alright, we got this one and we want this one. And you got the five of ones and the king of ones. Ooh, powerful energies. So the five of ones is about some drama going on around you, but the king of ones who rules over the wand suit, of course. I feel like this is like it doesn't need to get to you, right? The king is protected. The king is in the eye of the storm in the, uh you know, in the castle walls. And I feel like this energy of like, you know, it is like being in the eye of a storm. It could have drama happening around you. It doesn't impact you, but you might feel like, well, I should step in to help stop the drama between those people, between those people or whatever. This is like, no. This one, you get to sit out. You don't have to go to the battlefield with your your military. This is, you get to stay in your castle, on your throne and let them figure it out. Um you can maintain your relationship with each individual, but not their relationships with each other. And it's important because sometimes we can become a crutch for people. If we're rescuing them and making them talk things out and trying to become there, we stand in between and we get hit by both sides and we're like, oh, my god, you know. It's like, you know, not literally, but like emotionally or verbally. And it's like, no, 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 I'm not gonna need to do this. This week is about coming back to you, ruling over your own energy, not worrying about anyone else's. Uh so I like that for you this week. So that's a good little tidbit for you. That's what they have for you for this one. Happy pill. So many blessings to you. Right? And then Ashish, you are up. So Ashish, let's put your timestamp down here. And you wish to move to a different country, will you? Alright, based on current energy, will you move to a different country and we have an extra card for anything else you need to know about how to make that happen, right? Alright. You have the high priestess. High priestess energy is this energy of, you know, she does go way into her high priestess temple to connect with the spirit world, to look behind the veil, to dive deep into her emotions and deep into the unseen. And it does feel like, you know, she's able to go anywhere um because of her ability of being the high priestess. Um so I feel like you can, but follow your gut, not your heart in this case, follow your gut. And really consult spirit on why you want to go, where you want to go and let the hidden reasons come to the surface. Because um I feel like for your own journey and adventure and protection, but not scary, scary protection, but it's like, you don't really need to go there. This is where your highest expression of your life can be. So follow your intuition on where it is, but I feel like it is like, yeah, you can, but it's you that does it. Yeah, and the King of Swords. This is about doing your research and doing your due diligence and diving in here. Because the king is the master of mind and the of swords, and then all kings are given a second portion of swords, so they're very much on top here. Even if you want to go to school somewhere or learn somewhere, that's also very much supported here because they're the ruler of higher education. Um, so if you want to go to another country to learn something, you can definitely look into that too. So I like that for you, Ashish. That's what they have for you right now. Hopefully that helps a little bit. Alright, many blessings to you. Right, Livier Vagada, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. So Livier, you'd like a message for this last week of the month, right? Can you believe it? End of May already? Let's take a look here. What do they want you to know for this last week? What is going on this week? Got the Two Pentacles and the Six of Cups. Feels like there is some choices to make this week in the outside world with the Two of Cups. I'm not Two Cups, Two Pentacles and the Six of Cups. Is about reconciliation and something coming back from the past. So I feel like that's one of the cup, I keep on saying cups. One of the Pentacles, one of the choices is something that's coming back up again that you have to decide if you want to maybe renew something or allow something to come back into your life or someone to come back into your life or not. But it's like, this balance and harmony, I feel like there's this, I don't know, well, both of these are harmony. They mention it on here. But I feel like it's something that you really need to consider is, is this gonna bring my balance of my life like out of balance or will this help balance it out? And I feel like that needs to be the decision when this person or situation comes back is, is this really for my best? Or is this gonna throw off things? Or is it, do you feel out of balance and will this help balance? But it's all about that this week and these decisions to be made is, is this keeping me, is this moving me more towards gaining and maintaining balance or is this gonna take me out of balance? And I feel like that's their big question for this week is like, yeah, I'm ready for this balancing energy, you know. Alright, so hopefully that helps a little bit. That's what they have for you, Livier. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then Moonlight Five, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. And thank you for your donations earlier today, your little monkey. Don't see, don't look. So your free reading is, will um, oh, well, you know who, contact me again and if so, when? Your extra child in a man, in a man's body. Alright, let's take a look here. The one with the connection, right? Let's see what they have here. Will they, and if so, when? Will they connect with you? Hmm, looks like they're still trying to figure it out if they will or not. The justice card is like, they're, the scales and they're trying to see things differently. Uh, here's this balance energy again, trying to equal things out, trying to wait to see. It's like they're trying to get into their right mind before they take action. They're like, don't, don't do anything yet. Um, if they do, the King of Swords, yeah, a lot of stuff caught up in their mind here. All this swords, mental energy, they're really overthinking things and, and I don't feel like that they're, right now, they haven't made a decision and, and um, so I don't feel like if, if we were gonna say, I need to know right now, they're like, no. Because I am not in the right mind to talk to anybody. And it's like, okay, I need to balance things. I need to get, I need to get balanced, you know. And you're like, I agree, here, try these meds. You're woo-hoo. No, I'm just kidding, that's not uh, politically correct, but you know, hey. Alright, so that's what they have for you, my dear. Hopefully that helps, but for right now, it doesn't feel like it's headed that direction. Okay, good for you. Oops, in the long run, that's best for you. But even though your uh, parts of you want some connection with them, I know. Alright, so let's, that's it for the YouTube channel member free readings. And then we're gonna dive into the other free readings. So, alright, we'll start here. So up first, we've got, let me see, yeah, Marie Jones. So Marie, let's grab your timestamp here. I think it was around there. So Marie, what should you know right now? What does Spirit feel that is best for you to know right now? Got that and this here. So let me take a quick sip here, my green tea. Trying to clear out the sinus cavities. So you got the Hermit card, yay. The Hermit card is an, you know, it doesn't mean you have to be a complete hermit, but it is an invitation from Spirit to step back. Make sure you're taking that time to connect to the spirit world. It's a recommendation. It's saying, you know, no judgment, no expectations. Since you're asking, we encourage you to connect with us. Take time, like every day, even if it's for five minutes, to connect higher because a little bit of that energy every day goes a long way. And yeah, the Queen of Pentacles, it's, it brings you the abundance, it brings you this feeling of nurturing yourself. And it allows them to help give you guidance on creating new things, birthing new things. Uh, and that love energy is so amazing, you know. Um, the more we connect with that eternal unconditional love of the higher realms, like I said, even five minutes a day, just oh, it just, it changes us, um, because just, it's like one drop of unconditional love energy, you know, counteracts a million drops of lower vibrational, human conditional love, lower vibrational energy, right? And so it doesn't take a whole lot, um, and they're just saying, it just takes a little bit every day of connecting with Spirit. It doesn't have to be hour meditation. It's like, oh God, you know, it's like just five minutes, even a minute, you know. The uh, quest video that um, will be coming out in June is about how to make mindfulness a habit. And it's about ritual and uh, in creating it, it's trying to do it in where you can really connect in a lot of different ways with Spirit in a short periods of time, because we get it, you know. Humanity, we're all go, 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 and so much going on. If we can do in little bite-sized pieces of little things that we can connect, it makes all the difference. And I feel like that's the message that's coming in here. Is just little bite-sized pieces of spirit, even throughout the day, snack on spirit throughout the day. And you'll see a change and a difference um, in your world too. So hopefully that um, resonates for you. That's what they have for you, Marie. So many blessings to you. Right, and then uh, we have JoJo is up next. So JoJo, Johanna, uh, you are up next. So I want to know, what message do your guides have for you? Alright, hey yo. Good to see you. Which of your crazy zany spirit guides, right? Alright, well, Two Major Arcana. I like this. You have the Strength Guard, you have the Leo energy, I think it's your energy, right? Uh, you got the Lion and your higher self here, your spirit guides, the connection. Um, getting a hold of you, they're holding on to you because they're like, here comes the turbulence. Well, the wheel of fortune is turning. So when the wheel turns in your life, the wheels of fate are turning. Things are opening up, there's some change that's happening and they're like, here, come here. Um, so, you know. It's like if you have your dog in the backseat of a car and you take a sudden turn, you'll, you see in the rearview mirror, they go flying across, you're like, come here, I'm gonna hold on to you while I turn so you don't go flying around in the car. Well, this is what's going on here. They're embracing you and you might feel like this sudden feeling of like, why are you guys so close? It's like, because it's turning, we just want to keep you balanced so you don't fall on your bowie. Uh, and but there is this changing of the wheels of fate coming in your life. So I like that for you. Uh, and that's what they want you to know. Hold on, Buttercup. Uh, there's this, you mean a slight little alteration as things are moving, taking you in the direction towards that which is for you, the tune of for you, the wheel of fortune. So I like that. So that's a little tidbit that they have for you right now, Johanna. So many blessings to you. Right, and then Hot Sun, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. Alright, so Hot Sun, what are Tony's thoughts and feelings towards you in the bottom of the deck? Oh, right. So what are Tony's thoughts and feelings? Thoughts and feelings. And then the bottom of the deck, you got the Four of Cups. So the Four of Cups, yeah, they call this yearning, disillusion and boredom. Yeah. And of course, when we get the Four of Cups, it is about stagnancy where when we're looking for fulfillment in the outside world, you know, we do get in this place of, I thought all this stuff that was supposed to make me feel full and overflowing, why is it not, you know, because the outside world can't. Um, you got the Seven of Pentacles and the Star Card here. And the thoughts and feelings towards you, this is, you know, on one hand, there's like this, are they a Gemini? Kind of just feel like they have this split mind because on one side of them, they're like, it take, it's taking so long for this dream to come true, you know, this feeling like I thought that things are supposed to, you know, go in this direction. I thought it's supposed to be there. And I feel like that's kind of what they're looking at in their entire life. So I feel like it's not specifically just you, but it just feels like this is like the energy that's flowing out into their entire life. That they just feel like life isn't fulfilling. Relationship situations and things are falling flat for me. I just feel like, they're there. And I thought it was supposed to be more. And, and then the Seven of Pentacles also is like, well, if, if this dream isn't working, maybe I'm supposed to be pursuing some other type of dream? But they don't realize that. Any dream you look for out here is gonna fall short because until you go into here and upward, nothing is gonna feel fulfilling until you're fulfilled in here. So I feel like they're on this journey here of trying to, you know, that's what the Four of Cups is too. The Three Cups are the relationship situations and things. Here's the self-love that will make us feel full. We get bored with those three cups because what we're looking for is that Ace of Cups, the chalice of our self-love, our higher self. So I feel like that's what's kind of coming in. They're just uh, but you know, again, it's not just you. This isn't all about you this time, right? But it's um, the uh, their life, they just kind of, it's, it's the the glasses through which they're seeing their entire world. That's what they're seeing everything through. So that's how they see you, but that's how they see their job. That's how they see relationships with everyone, family, friends, whatever. That's the whole world just feels like to them right now. So hopefully that helps understand where they're coming from, uh, Hot Sun, but that's what's uh, for you right now. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then Swarup, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp. Okay, there we go. Hello, hello, career reading, please. Will I get a, a new long-term job in the next two months? Alright, let's take a look here. Will you get a new long-term job for the next two months based on current energy? They do want this one. And what else do they want you to know around career? So will you get one? Seven of Wands is an energy of possibilities. Wand's energy is about uh, you know, the power of where we focus our energy. And this is about, if you are true to your authentic self and you are you, you don't dim your light, you don't ask permission to shine, you are just yourself, you don't defend yourself, you just go for what you're wanting. And I feel like that's important here because this is challenge, this is courage. It's about going where you really want to go, not settling for something like, well, this I could probably do. It's like, go for what you're really wanting, whatever challenging new thing. This is about having the courage to step forward. Yeah, because you have the Four of Swords, it's uh, letting the expectations go. Both of these energies together bring in a, you know, a mental stagnancy, a settling energy of what you've settled for before. And it's like, no longer, it's about you pursuing that. If you go for something that is really what your heart wants, where your energy is wanting to take you, you can get a job within two months and long-term. But I feel like you, the reason why things aren't working out is because you're choosing something that your mind thinks you should go to, but your heart and your energy is going, we want to go this way. So you do this and they're like, no. We're not gonna do that. And so it doesn't work out. You don't get the offer or the job ends or whatever. And it's like, because I want to go this way. So really figure out what is it passion? Where is it that you really want to go? Not where your mind thinks you should go, but where do you want to go? Your, your, your being, your heart, your energy, your passion, right? So hopefully that helps a little bit. So I'll, but I know this is an exciting time of change for you. Yay. Alright, many blessings. Alright, up next we got Mika Khan. Let's grab your timestamp here. You're correct, timestamp, there we go. So Mika, what color wrap is duly gonna put on his car? Oh, the wrap on the car. You know, I've got these charms with all these colored butterflies in here. And then a neat sound. It's like a alright, here we go. Uh, it looks here to be dun, da-da-da, red, right? Let me see. Is there orange in here? Yeah, there is an orange. So it's definitely not the orange because the orange is very, very orange. This is red. So I feel like they're gonna put red on it. Wow, so that's what feels like it's coming in. So there you go. Have fun, Mika. Alright, so many blessings to you. Alright, let's bring, whoops. There we go. Let's bring the rest of these over here. We're getting there, everybody. Thank you for your patience again in getting to your readings. So grateful. One more, here they come. Alright. Come on, mouse, be cooperative. We're almost done. Don't give up. Alright, Aria, you are up next. So let's grab your timestamp. And Aria, you want to know, why did they take away your promotion at work? Those jerks, I'm just kidding. That is unloving and unkind. Uh, was it, uh, wasn't it time? Everything was fine, but they took uh, this away from me. Is there something better coming? Alright, let's take a look here. Tell us about this. Why was this taken away? What's the reason, reason? And, and there's something better coming? Let's take a look and say, so why was it removed? You know, the chariot, power of choice. There is movement energy with the chariot. And it is success um, energy. It is movement energy. Let's see if this other card is here too. Yeah, okay, you got the Lover's Card too. So all of this has to do with the power of choice energy that's coming in here. And this, you know, there's no wrong choice. There's just different choices with different outcomes and different experiences. This doesn't feel faded. It doesn't feel like you, you were supposed to get the job or not supposed to get the job, like, you know, as far as uh, for your path, any kind of faded moments. The job's situation doesn't influence the um, few faded pivotal things that you want to experience in this life. The rest of it is possibility, which is what comes in here. So something you can think about is so this energy that we have in each moment, if I'm focusing on what I'm grateful for, that we have in each moment, if I'm focusing on what I'm grateful for, like truly, my energy, I can say I'm grateful for this and I'm grateful for that, but energy doesn't lie, right? So this is about not about what I said, or my intentions and different things, but what is my energy? In me, is the energy grateful for the job I do have and that I have had? And what, what is in my life and what I have had in my life? Is, is it gratitude? Or was it, I need this? I want this? Because in order to need and want means we feel lack. We feel like something's missing in our life. And when we have lack or need energy, or we fear something's gonna leave, or we fear something's not gonna come in. When I have that energy, if I fear something's gonna come into my life that I don't want, we suck it into our life. When I fear I'm gonna lose something and not have something, we repel it out of our life. If I uh, have energy of want and need, actually push it away from me as well. And so, you know, when we contrast that everything that happens in my life does happen for me, and that my energy is what's drawing or repelling things out of my life, then I can look at it and change it from, they took this from me. That's a victim energy, right? Like, oh, this is happening to me. Someone's doing something and I can kind of look at it in a different way. There's nothing wrong with feeling that way, because we come down here to experience what it might feel like to be a victim. But after we finish being on the floor going, oh, it happened to me. We're like, okay, I've had enough of that. I can get up, brush myself off and go, why did I want this to happen for me? And what's my energy around it? Can I switch things up and go, yeah? Instead of feeling like I need to get somewhere else and I don't have enough now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna return to this place of peace inside into this moment going, Creator, I'm so grateful for this. I love this. I'm truly so grateful for this. Sincere, great gratitude for those things. That's what draws more things in. If I feel like this want, need and urgency that I have to get, then that's what's pushing things away from me. And it's to empower me, to teach to me that in these things, when it's happening, that's, it's good to learn this now. When bigger things happen, I'll be able to be focusing on gratitude and draw big things into my life instead of be pushing all this other stuff away. So hopefully that helps um, with all this. So returning to gratitude for what is, you know, is there something better? Coming as far as promotions or opportunities and stuff? There is no better um, from spirit standpoint. There's just different, different opportunities, different experiences, different outcomes. There's not better, um, there's not good or bad uh, from their perspective, just different. Yeah, there are different uh, things coming, but for you right now, the focus is, what am I grateful for in the jobs? Uh, the job I have now, what am I grateful for in that? And any positions that I've had in the past, what am I grateful for in that? You're creating a list of things to Creator going, now if you wanna, if you want a different job, then you can go, hey Creator, I would like a different job. You can ask once, you, if you ask, 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 that becomes lack energy, but you can go, hey, you know, it'd be, it'd be fun to have a new job. This is what I love about the job I have now and with the jobs I have had. You're giving them this list of this is what I'd like. It's like when a grandparent goes, you know, what do you want for Christmas? Well, here's my list of things I love. And they're like, all right, I will bring you stuff from that list, you know, and that's what uh, is coming in. So that's what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. Hang in there. All right. And then Musical Beer, you are up. Let's give you your timestamp here. All right. So Musical Beer, you wanna know, will you see Conrad this week? All right, let's take a look here. Based on current energies, will you see Conrad this week? All right. Well, you got the no card, the creator card. It's a, it's a um, there's two cards, a yes and a no card in this deck, this tarot deck. And you got the no card. There's like a which, it's like something sudden allows it not to happen. But I do feel like with the ten of cups that you will be scheduled soon, because this is joy, fullness and overjoy that comes in. So um, I feel like, you know, though you're not able, something happens where you're not able to see them this week, that you will see them soon. And it'll be kind of making up for it, but it just definitely feels happy. A lot of happy energy on there, but not this week. So I know. But that's what they have for you. They'll make up, they'll make up for it, kind of energy, right? You're like, all right, as long as you make, you know, it's like, well, you can see me that one day, but I'm not gonna be able to do it. But how about, you know, next week, I'll see you this and we'll go, we'll go do this too. You're like, okay, that's good. That makes up for it. All right. So that's what they have for you, my dear. Many blessings to you. All right. And then Nicole P, you are up. So Nicole, you're having anxiety that you might lose a good bond with Thomas this summer. You were hoping to get somewhere inside about our connection in the future. All right, let's take a look here. The good news is that, you know, whatever's meant for us never passes us by. And that if we do lose something, uh, and I'm not preparing you for anything, I'm just, they're, they're giving you some perspective before we actually do this, because the anxiety is coming for a reason, so you can face something and transform it so that this trigger that's coming up with anxiety can not trigger anymore, but that and other things too. But it is this, you know, realization that whatever's meant for me never passes me by. And if something's removed out of my life or someone's moved out of my life, that it's to create space for something that's even more in alignment with who I wanna be and where I wanna go. Obstacles, things removed, so I can move forward into something like, wow. It's like, let's say I'm, I'm gonna have a flight to Hawaii. And I'm like, okay, the, the seat that I was assigned is the one in the back of the plane that's up against the, the wall of the, you know, restroom that only moves back like an inch, you know, how, because it's against the wall, you can't like go further back. It's like, oh. And um, and they keep on slamming the door, slamming the door, slamming the door. And that's where all the flight attendants are making all the noise and putting all this stuff together and the ice and the cups and and all this stuff. And you're just like slam, slam, close, close, open and closing of the restroom door. And you're hearing, you're smelling these smells and you're like, oh my God. But you're glad you're on this flight to Hawaii, right? And so you're like, I'm afraid I, I don't want my flight to get canceled. And then you get to the gate and they, they call your name and you're like, oh God, this isn't good. You go up there and the customer service person is like, I'm so sorry. We've overbooked the flight. And you're like, I knew it, I knew it, I knew it. So we had to give your seat to someone else uh, in coach. And you're like, oh, fine. You're thinking, when's my next flight gonna be? So we upgraded you to first class seats. So here's your new thing. You're like, what? Say that again? We're giving you a first class seat instead, since we had one available. Say it one more time, right? And that's the thing is if, if we can trust the spirit that it's never a downgrade, it's always an upgrade, that then we have less fear about something leaving our life. And we get to the root of it going, well, what was I fearing? Well, I'm fearing that if they gave away that seat, that that means something about me? No. Just, you know, it's uh, showing us about uh, life, you know, and, and it brings our fears up so we can be released from it, because the fear usually is we're defining our worth by someone else's actions or non-actions, their words or their silence. So there's a lot of great awareness that comes in with this, right? So let's see here, Nicole. All of that. And then now let's uh, pull your cards here. So based on current energies, tell us about Thomas and your bond with Thomas here. So you have the Emperor energy coming in here along with the Eight of Swords. So, you know, the Eight of Swords is about, you know, facing our fears and being aware of our own thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that make us feel blinded and bound and trapped and restricted. And and I'm so sorry, this isn't bad news or anything, but it is uh, frustrating news, because the Emperor card is still trying to decide. It's Aries energy about action, but the action isn't defined yet. It's like it, this, it's like you, the not knowing right now is the part that's allowing you to realize these, the anxiety. Is there even anxiety? It even says literally anxiety on the card? You gotta make it up. So the not knowing piece is what is to face the not knowing feeling and going, what are you fearing? You know, it's really getting into that with that Eight of Swords. What do I feel it means if I do lose this bond? What do I fear will happen? Getting to the root of the fear below all of this, what am I afraid of? Because when we get to the real fears, it's like, we start saying it out loud or write it down. We're like, you know, that is kind of ludicrous when we get down to it, like, oh my God, I'm gonna be late for work and oh, oh my God, I'm afraid I'm gonna get fired. And we stop there. It's like, well, what are you afraid of if you get fired? Well, I'm afraid if I get fired, I won't find a job again. How likely is that? Well, not really. But what if I don't? Well, what if you don't? Well, then I'm gonna lose my house, my car. I'm not gonna have any money. I'm gonna end up starving. Do you think like friends and family wouldn't help you out? What if they don't? Well, what if they don't? Well, then I'll end up living on the streets. Okay. What will people think of me? Well, maybe they'll ostracize you. Maybe they'll stop speaking to you. Maybe you'll end up dying on the edge of the town alone and get eaten by wolves. You know, when we take it to the extreme of where it goes, it's like, what's the likelihood that it'll get that far? And we're like, no. Then when, because when we bring these thoughts and beliefs to the surface and we see them in the light, they seem less dark and they seem less uh, likely, right? But I feel like this is the, the journey here, Nicole, and I'm so sorry. It's time to face the fear. That's why they're not giving you the outcome. They're like, the not knowing is part of your ability to release these from you. So I know. Talk to your spirit guides. We need to dial them up. Hey, why did you do this? Okay. So that's what they have for you, my dear. Hang in there. Many blessings to you. Right, Benita Bala, you are up next. Whoops. Let's get your correct timestamp in there. You were two, oh, two twenty. Look all those twos. So Benita, how will Sean treat you in the relationship if we were to get into one? Just curious. You're so funny. All right. So based on current energies, if you were down to get there, we're gonna go a possibility. Here's the possibility string. What would it end up? What would that look like? Thank you. What else? This one came flying out. Six of Wands, the equal passion going back and forth. It's a victory card. A triumph card. It would feel like yay uh, for most of it. And then the Two of Swords. There'd be a battle going on between the head and the heart here with this energy. And I feel like there'd be a lot of indecision. So I feel like it would like start off like, wow. And then I feel like there'd be a fork in the road and it would get stuck in a fork in the road. It's like, well, aren't we gonna go any further? And they're like, I'm not sure. So I feel like there would be equal of passion in the beginning with Wands, so energetic attraction, physical attraction. And then what, is this gonna go anywhere else? Hmm, I don't know. And I feel like it just sits, that's as far as it gets. And they stay, well, we could go this way, could end or can go further. I don't know. It just sits there. Excuse me. So it, it feels like, well, I mean, decision hasn't been made, made yet there, because I, and, and I feel like kind of their tendency is what I'm feeling here is like, that they take a long time to go past that spot, because there's a lot of their head battling their heart energy. And they have these hesitancies of the mind, even though the heart goes, I, yeah, I want more, 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 more. The mind's like, I don't know. And that's, there's this like this battle that goes on there between both of those. So it's like, well, feels like a good start, but then it kind of just stagnates quickly and doesn't go anywhere and sits in that for quite a while. So hopefully that helps, Benita. You're like, I'm okay with that. You're so funny. All right. So many blessings to you, my dear. All right. And then Maria P, you are up. Thank you for your donations earlier. And for your general reading, you wanted to know, uh, I mean, you're reading, you wanna know a general reading about you and Wali. Let's take a look here. What does spirit want you to know? Whoa. Good catch, good catch. So you have the judgment card here is like this calling to see things from a higher perspective and to take things to a higher place. And you got the Eight of Wands, which is good news and travel too here. So I feel like there might be like a trip that can be coming here in the future for you guys, where you actually go away somewhere together. Ooh, maybe that's the secret. Shh, shh, shh. Just don't, don't dive more into it. But there is this like taking things to a new level energy with the judgment card. I'm sorry, I gotta take a sip. I'm almost done. Don't give up yet. So we're almost to the last one. We don't wanna like, oh, my voice went away. So sorry. You're like, no. Okay. So, but the judgment card is a card of, it's an angel, rising people from the dead, which is like this resurrection, but it's um, it's more like the, because they have a trumpet and they're rising. It's a calling, calling things higher. And that's like, I feel like this is like a next step of like, what is coming forward here. I don't know if it's for your one year anniversary, but I feel like there is this, I wanna take a trip away together kind of energy. Not a long trip, just could be like a day trip even, like during the day, maybe not staying overnight. Maybe it is overnight. But um, I feel like there is this, you wanna go on a little journey, a little adventure? You're like, what? Really? For the day? I'll pick up in the morning. I'll get you back by the night. Like, maybe if you have to have your kids the next day or there's something where, you know, you have to be back, but um, I feel like it might start off as a day trip and then maybe an overnight trip eventually. So I like this little, little tease uh, for the future here, teaser trailer of a future coming movie, right? Part of your days of our lives. So that's what they have for you right now, Maria. So many blessings to you. All right. Then lastly, but not leastly, we have Sun and Music. Hello, hello, Sun and Music. Anyone wanted to know, will you get a job offer next week? Let's take a look here. Based on current energies. Are you getting a new job offer in this coming week? I don't want that one, but I do want this one. Okay, let's take a look. So you've got the Five of Wands. There is a movement of energy. Let's see what this is bringing you here. I got the Creator card that says no on here. But what I like is the Five of Wands energy that's here. Does uh, give you the ability of transforming energy? So when I said based on current energy, the answer is no. But with the Five of Wands, it says, that's the number of change, the number five. You can change the energy if you want. And what I mean by that is, because if I'm focusing on, I really want a job, I really need a job, that's lack energy. Because if I need something or want something, that means I don't have something. So I have not something and that's I'm lacking something, right? So if I'm focusing my energy on lack by wanting and needing a job or a different thing, actually pushing it away from me. And how you can switch this energy in here is, okay, if you have a job now and you're looking for a new job, if you can think of what am I grateful for in the job I have now? If you don't have a job now and you're looking for one, then you can think about what jobs have I had in the past? And what have I loved about them? What am I grateful for? So gratitude energy um, is what grows and expands and draws things to us. Want energy and need energy is repelling energy and it pushes things away from us. Then you can go Creator, I would, I would really want, I would really like a new job. Ask once, but if we continue to ask, that becomes want and needy, lack energy, right? Ask once, but if we continue to ask, that becomes want and needy, lack energy, right? Ask them once, they got a great memory. And then the rest of the time, it is all about gratitude for all that I have had and what I do have. That's the energy that draws things in. And that's how you can change the energy. You can change that no to a yes. So that's your energy. And that's what they have for you right now, Sun and Music. So hopefully that helps. Many blessings to you. Thank you guys again so much for your patience and getting to your reading. Here in about sixty seconds after I end my session, I'm gonna jump over and put a pinned comment listing all the readings I completed with timestamps. So you could just click on your timestamp. It'll take you to the place in the video where your reading is at. Uh, and I'll be back next Friday for more readings. I'm on Friday and Saturday nights at six PM. Saturday and Sunday morning afternoons from eleven AM. Also get together during the week on Thursday nights with my uh, Praying Mantis and Zen Cricket YouTube channel members. If you're interested, there's a link down below. Two ninety-nine a month for Zen Cricket, seven ninety-nine a month for Praying Mantis. We do have two, three, four hours uh, depending um, for unlimited tarot readings, oracle readings, past life readings, all that, if you're interested. Uh, also, I offer personal readings uh, and hedges of peace and love. There's a link down below there for that. And I have a ton of free content too. Uh, all the playlists are down in the description box, new and full moon readings and and, and all those things too. Also have a drawing next Friday for giving away a personal recorded reading, at least one. We know we're, I'm gonna give away more. But if you check my social media uh, and, or on the posting tab of my channel page, you'll see a big twenty-four hundred. I'm celebrating reaching twenty-four hundred plus uh, members or um, subscribers. Uh, and so all you need to do is click on the video that's linked there and it'll tell you how to sign up. And I'll be uh, recording a video on Friday announcing the winners and I'll put that out on Friday. So, there you go. Alright, everybody. Enjoy your week. Until I see you again, remember every second of every day of your life, you truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of all things, our Creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love. Hang in there. Take care of yourself. Remember, have some fun cuz why are we being so serious? Alright, I love you guys. So grateful. We'll see you soon.